Call the meeting to order. The pledge will be led by Board Member Gigi Robinson.
I pledge to ... which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to the November 15th Board Meeting. It's so good to see everyone and lots of students and parents. So exciting. Tonight, I want to read to you Board Policy 1.400 Electronic Attendance. Absent Board Members May Attend A Regular Or Special Meeting By Electronic Means If The Member Is Absent Because Of Work, A Family Emergency, Or The Member's Military Service. If A Board Member Is Absent Due To Military Service, He/She May Participate Electronically As Often As He Or She Is Able To Do So. However, A Board Member May Not Participate Electronically More Than Two Times Per Year For Absences Due To Work And/or Family Emergencies. And the requirement for that participation? A quorum of the Board must be physically present at the meeting in order for our member to attend electronically. We have a quorum. Any member wishing to participate electronically must do so using technology that allows the Chair to visually identify the member.
Chairman, you have Amy Dodson.
Hi, Amy.
Thank you, Dr. Sam Hill.
Welcome, welcome. Thank you all. And the responsibility for the connection lies with the member wishing to participate electronically. No more than three attempts to connect shall be made unless the Board chooses to make additional attempts. They are connected and we are ready to go. Roll call, Mrs. Vaughn.
We've got all one agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you so much. Approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Motion by Pat Welsh. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Andy Witt. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed?
Dr. Hill.
President.
The motion is agenda is presented. Go in favor, would you raise your hand, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Vaughn?
That's all.
Thank you very much. Very good. Special items. Do we have any individuals to address the Board on an agenda item? We will move on to student celebrations. Dr. Stevens?
Yes, we are in our third year of what is becoming an annual event. And those in the audience can see some big versions of birthday cards on the ground. And I am going to ask our five artists who created these birthday cards to come forward, grab your card, and face the audience so they can see it. Come on up. All right. While they stand here with their art on display, these birthday cards, I want to tell you a little bit about this. So our first year, when we started this event, we had high school students from the digital arts classes design and create the cards. Last year, we moved to the elementary level and students from Farrah Elementary designed our cards. This year, Robert E. Lee Elementary, fifth graders designed the cards and competed in a contest. Let me tell you, it is not easy narrowing the field from the 10 best. By the way, it started with way more than 10 at Robert E. Lee, but we got 10 here in the office and we had to narrow to five cards. The 10 cards that were submitted here, all we had was the card, what was on the outside, the written text on the inside, and a number. We had no idea who the creator was. Our school board members, our leadership team members, and our central office staff all put in votes for their favorite birthday card. These are the five winners and they are. And when I hear, when I call your name, I just want you to lift up your card and shake it. Here we go. Kennedy Crabtree. Woo-hoo! Yes. Ingrid Foltz, check her card out. Love it, love it. Katie Martin, let's see that card. Beautiful. Jacey Monroe. All right. And Taylor Pearson. So just so you know, it is my privilege to personally sign and send a birthday card to 530 employees every year, and I use these birthday cards to do that. So let us give them one more round of applause. Thank you, girls, so much, so much. All right, smiling, big. All right, it makes you want to just sing, "Happy Birthday To You." All right, y'all may be seated.
Thank you. Thank you so much, yes.
Yes, you all may have a seat. Thank you so much. So proud of them. Beautiful artwork. And their messages inside, and each of their, their parents has received a card as a gift. And they, several of them saw every year what I do personally is I take each of the cards and I create my own art that's on display in my office. So if you're interested, you can come by and see year one and two, and soon you will see year three posted. All right. THS Girls Cross Country Team. Let's have this fantastic team come forward. Our high school cross country team, come on down, had an outstanding season sending seven athletes of this team to the T double S double A state meet on November 3rd. As a team, this group finished 12th in the state. Can I get a whoop, 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 whoop? All right. Congratulations. They also, they also had a third place finish in regionals to earn the ability to compete at the state level. I would like to congratulate these young ladies. Let me say their names to you. They are Lily Story, Ellie Uline, Sarah Aiken, Jordan Spry, Lexi Lester, Audrey Sarabi, and Addie Coleman, as well as Bella Rivera and Jocelyn Garcia. Can I give a hand for them? I would like. All right, let's smile for the picture real quick and then I'm going to acknowledge the seven. So we did have seven who competed at the state level. When you hear your name, please just give a little wave of like for people as we do video this for folks watching to be able to see who you are. So Lily Story was one of our seven, Ellie Uline, Sarah Aiken, Jordan Spry, Lexi Lester, Audrey Sarabi, and Addie Coleman. Congratulations to this incredible team. Thank you. You guys may be seated. And I want another, to recognize another group. I'm not certain if they are here, but I'm going to continue forward. So at the middle school and high school levels, we had students audition for the American Choral Directors Association Choir. And I am proud to share this evening that we had three students in our district who will be joining this national choir in Cincinnati on February 25th. If here they are, Timothy Hanson, a sixth grader from West Middle School, he will be joining Treble Choir as a soprano. Wesley Hanson, an eighth grader from West Middle, will be joining the Junior High Choir as a bass. And Ann Duncan will be joining the ACDA National Women's Choir. And we will give them all a round of applause. We're so proud of them. Ann Duncan was hoping to be here tonight, but she is with the Midstate Honor Choir this evening, performing in Murfreesboro. Busy, busy students. I'm so proud of all of them. It's so fun to celebrate. Chairman?
Thank you so much. We are very happy to have you stay with us, but we also know that it's almost time to put on our pajamas and get in bed. So if you're, if you're ready to go, you may exit now. Thank you all so much for coming. And parents, thank you so much for being here and friends.
Okay, athletics update. Dr. Stevens?
Yes, I am very excited. Each month, we are going to have our athletic director, John Olive, to join us. You know, sports are year-round, and that is why we have a full-time athletic director. And we have athletes at the middle and high school levels, so he will be providing an update to us. So, John, take it away.
Okay. You just saw the Girls Cross Country Team. They finished 12th in the Class AA State Championship. What you may not have realized, though, is the young lady in the red dress standing before you, lettered in two sports at the same time. She played for our girls soccer team and she also ran cross country, Lily Story. Last night at the soccer banquet, she was honored as an all-district soccer player, as well as the Defensive Player of the Year for our soccer team. She also finished 26th at the state cross-country meet, and she's actually a three-sport letter winner as she is a defending 800-meter state champion in double-A track. So outstanding young lady there. We are kind of in a lull here as we change over from the fall sports to the winter sports. Middle school basketball is going, okay? All four teams are, have played for three weeks now, so they're approaching the middle of their season. I wanted to tell you about one team, though. And this team has four players excelling in Mr. Stout's Algebra I class, has three players on Dr. Stevens Advisory Committee, and they have a sixth-grade player who has a pet sitting business called Liv Sits, and she purchased her own wall of support with her name and logo on it. And they are seven and two, including their preseason schedule. So that's East Middle School. That's what's going on with them. Also, in our community, we have the THS and T- Telemah Middle School swim teams begin their seasons tonight at D W Wilson. And in addition to that, last week, we had two citizens recognized by the T double S double A. Mark Moran was recognized as the T double S double A District Four Contributor of the Year for all of his years of being the Quarterback Club President and his work with our wrestling down through all ages. Also, Mike Doc McKenzie was the T double S double A District Four Official of the Year as he celebrated his 51st season of officiating football games this past fall. I think with all that said, the tennis courts may be in the Buildings and Grounds Committee, but you have fence posts up and they are beginning to tie them all together. No fences there yet, but it is finally beginning to make some progress. I'm done. Thank you all.
All right. And I do think we have the East-West Basketball Game this week.
Thursday.
Thursday. So...
At the high school.
Choose your side, right?
Wear the proper colors.
Thank you, Coach Olive. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented? Motion by Gigi Robinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Teresa Lawson. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
That's all in favor, Chairman.
Thank you so much. Okay, sorry, sorry, sorry. Unfinished business, Building and Grounds Report, Teresa Lawson.
Okay, hold on.
Lots going on.
Yes, Building and Grounds. Okay. We met, the Building and Grounds Committee, we met on Monday, November the 7th, and we discussed the following. We were updated about the plans for additional lighting for the south parking lot. These are items for Telemah High School. Replacing the rubberized stair treads is scheduled for Thanksgiving break. The progress of the tennis courts, which is scheduled to be completed in early December, we talked about that at length, and as John just stated, we're, we're moving right along now. We'll have a hiccup or two, but you know, that's to be expected. The committee also discussed the roof project, and the roof project is complete with, except for punch list items. The vendor is waiting on parts to arrive to begin the interior door lock upgrades. So that's everything at Telemah High School. So we'll move on to Bel Air. We discussed the roof project, which is complete except for the metal fascia. And painting of the hallways continues, and what I've seen so far looks really much improved, really nice. So great things happening there. East Middle, the, this is dirt work, the dirt work, okay. To alleviate drop-off from the sidewalk at the soccer and softball complex is complete. And we were informed that train anticipates starting to receive HVAC units in November in hopes of, to begin the swapping units over the winter break, and that will be a great improvement there. So moving on to West Middle. O L G is working on sidewalk options and specs for bid to add sidewalk from the street sidewalks to the building coming from both Hermitage Drive and Turkey Creek Drive. Okay, Robert E. Lee, the committee was updated on potential price options to repair and replace the playground asphalt pad. We decided to accept invitations to bid on replacing the current pad with a, with a concrete pad. Administration will complete the bid process and bring to the Board for approval at the January meeting. Staff responded to the request from the October meeting with price options for a fence running perpendicular to the school between the building and an adjoining neighbor. And this adjoining neighbor is, it would be the Max Lane entrance as you come in from King's Lane onto Max Lane, and as you turn the curve, there'll be a fence that will go perpendicular, and that, that should be, that should be really good. At Central Office, O L G is working on potential design options to improve accessibility, accessibility to the building. And the Fair Project, we're working through the construction manager contract process. So that was, that's all for now, but we've completed a lot, we're still working on a lot, and so that's, that's the report.
Anything more from that committee?
Well done, Ford. I would say that went to Bel Air in Monday, and it is really, really nice. Tile, paintings, the crow, door jams, we're starting to paint them this week, and that will make a big difference to it.
Thank you, Maintenance. Policy updates, Gigi Robinson.
The policy team, we met on November 4th, and we reviewed policies. We're in section seven is where we've been working. And the policy manual foretold in City Schools, it's a, it's a huge notebook, and it's quite a task to stay on top of all those policies and make sure that it repays. Thankfully, we have Sandra Hawn, who works tirelessly and meticulously to help us with this. But we have several recommendations, but I'll, I'm gonna go over these and then I'll make a motion. We looked at policy 1600 is about development and adoption. 1901 is about charter school applications. 1704 about charter schools. There, 32181 was about therapy dogs in schools. 6100 is student goals. 6200 is attendance. 6200 dash one is attendance during post-secondary visits. This is like for high school students that are going out to look at colleges and things like that. 6210, homeschooling. 6203 is full admissions. 6209, child custody for access policies. So our motion is that we would like to adopt policy 1901, and we would like to accept the updates to policies, policies 1605, 6.201, and 6.209. Updates to issue dates on the following policies. And what that means is that it's been looked at, and so we're ready to, to put the new date on it, and that is 6.100, 6.200, 6.201, 6.202, and 6.203. And delete policies 1.704 and 3.2181 on the first and final reading.
Very good, thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt these policies and update the policies and update issue dates and delete policies?
Yes, so moved.
Motion by Teresa Lawson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pat Welsh. Any discussion?
I think Ms. Lawson was correct. Thank you, Ms. Vaughn, but I'd also like to thank the committee members, they did a tough job.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Anything else? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
That's all in favor, Chairman.
Thank you so much. Lots of good policy work and maintenance work, excellent. District report, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Stevens?
Yes, and before I share a few things, I do want to acknowledge the work of the Policy Committee, just so that the public understands, Board Policy is rooted in state and federal laws and regulations, and obviously those things change at times, sometimes within a session. And so keeping up with those policies is really important, and then aligning it to the practices we have. So sometimes lots of people review policy to help the, the Policy Review Committee. You all do amazing work, and it's a lot of work, and it is constant, as you know, laws and rules, they change. So I really wanted to share today, this evening, how much I enjoyed spending time with you all at TSBA. You know, just being together, learning together, listening to speakers, being able to collaborate and talk with other people in the field is really just a great time. I love hearing best practices, and I especially love the messages of the keynotes who challenge and inspire us. I wanted to share with you all, I'm sure these words are resonating with you all, too, Dr. Rigsby's words of practicing the basics, taking ownership and maintaining a growth mindset really has been on my mind this week, as well as Aristotle's quote that he shared. "We are what we repeatedly do." Excellence then is not an act, but a habit. That has really impacted me this week. Speaking of habits, celebrating students, well, that's one of ours, isn't it? We love to celebrate students and faculty, and it's so much fun to take time to do those things. The birthday card recognition this evening is a wonderful opportunity to celebrate our elementary artists. It's also a great reminder of our important, the important emphasis we place on the arts. With that in mind, I want to remind all of you here and those of you watching, we do have a Telemah City Schools Art Gallery. So this month, we have Farrah Elementary artwork on display. I would really encourage you to walk the hallway, take in the artwork. Our families are invited to view the artwork with their children. It's just really a great time to celebrate some beautiful learning that's taking place across our district. This artwork does change monthly, so come on by anytime, from 8 to 4, our gallery is open and in session. I do want to let you know that Fair is also December. Please note, the art teacher has already told me the artwork will be changed, so you need to come November and December to see the different artwork of our Farrah Frogs. Most of you know, speaking of arts, how much I love music and singing. Remember, it's not whether you can, it's whether you do, and I just do, so there you go. It's wonderful to celebrate students tonight who made the American Choral Directors National Honor Choir. The accolades just keep on coming for our district as we had 14 Telemah High School students audition in place in the Midstate and Freshman Honor Choir. These students each do a blind audition in front of five judges, and I might mention, this is the first time these auditions have taken place since COVID. So we are still beginning to find our place back into our normal routines. I do want to congratulate the following students. Freshman Honor Choir, all freshmen who auditioned made the Honor Choir, by the way, and they are Landon Dayton, Ella Edwards, Jocelyn Garcia, Violetta Lopez, Ava O'Neil, Alex Tobit, Edgar Torres Mata. Midstate, Shelby Penny, Jocelyn Turrentine, Elizabeth Wommack, and Luke Yates. Midstate and Allstate, Hannah Warda, Ann Duncan, Marco Alvarado. I look forward to celebrating the students that made Allstate Choir in person at a future meeting. At last month's Board Meeting, you'll remember, you heard from four of our interns as they shared what the Leadership Internship Program meant to them over this last year. These interns will graduate in December after an intense year of learning and growing in their understanding of and role as a school leader intern. We are in the process of determining the interns for the next year's Leadership Internship Program. Educators that expressed interest and met the criteria have until this Friday to upload the supporting documents for the panel to consider the final program participants. I look forward to notifying the candidates on December 12th. I'm really thankful for your support of this program as together we grow leadership capacity of our educators who are also licensed administrators. And believe it or not, we have three more days until Thanksgiving break. Teachers, staff, and students will enjoy next week out of school. All will return bright and ready and eager on Monday, November 28th for what will prove to be, as all of you know, a very fast three weeks until Christmas break. Students will dismiss on Friday, December 16th at 1 for the Christmas break, and I just want to say to all of you, Happy Thanksgiving and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. We will meet again in January.
That's right, Chairman.
Thank you. Excellent report, Board Chairman's report. In, in talking about celebrating our students and the arts, I also want to give thanks and appreciation to all those that participated in the play Rumors at the high school. It was excellent. It's not an easy production, so much dialogue, and they did a wonderful job, and it was, it was so fun to be there to see that. Pat shared with me this, the 2023 Legislative Agenda Synopsis that he was sent as a TSBA Board Member, and it is excellent because it's just a nice little synopsis, and Sandy copied those for all of us to have. This is our last Board Meeting of 2022, and I want to say that I'm so very thankful to serve with all of you. I appreciate all the incredible work that you all do for TCS. We are so fortunate to have a system filled with wonderful administrators, teachers, support staff, parents, and most importantly, students. And I wish everyone the happiest, happiest of holidays. Thank you. City Board Liaison Report, Alderman Daniel Berry.
Chairman, we're members. Since our last meeting, I'm excited to let you know that my Bel Air beat K L. We were undefeated and won Great Timmellin's Flag Football Championship this year. It should be a trophy, but it's there yet at Bel Air this year. You can go check that out. Extremely proud of them. This past Saturday, we had Wildcats and Friends, Parks and Recreation. That was an amazing event. It was about 35, 37 degrees outside. It was freezing. 170-something kids had signed up. It was a free event. There was about 126, 27 that came out. There were nine professional athletes, baseball players, who all played for one of the major league teams, and majority of them were from Telemah, which is amazing to me, and I think that it speaks well to the excellent tradition of our athletics here in, in Telemah. The school system, the youth league part of that, and so that's exciting. I think it was a great, it was cold, and they froze. I think it was a great experience that they're going to remember for, for years to come. And that's all that I have. We wish everybody a Happy Thanksgiving, a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and be safe.
Thank you so much. Personnel, Dr. Stevens?
Yes, personnel changes for November were provided to you in an attachment.
Thank you. Monthly Financial Report, Mr. Ray?
Thank you. You have there in your packet the through October financials, so a third, believe you... You have, there in your packet, the through October financials, so a third, believe it or not, of the fiscal year represented there. You'll notice that I did add a third column to the numbers, which is the projected end of year balance, which is just a rough multiplication process to give you an idea of, if things track the way they are now, where we would end up. And I'll continue to update that. Next report that you receive for a meeting will be halfway through the fiscal year, believe it or not. I'm Chair.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ray. Is there anything else to come before the board? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Andy Witt, is there a second?
I'm gonna turn my microphone on for the first time, second.
Okay, and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.